All right, ladies and gentlemen, I will call the regular meeting of the City of International Falls for this Monday, September 21st, 2020 to order. Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Minnesota statute 13D dot zero two one allows meetings to be conducted by phone or other electronic means during the following conditions. The mayor has determined an in-person meeting or a meeting conducted under section 13D dot zero two is not practical due to a health pandemic. All mayor and councilors participating in the meeting can hear one another and all can hear discussion. We do have councillor Bowler on the Internet with us tonight. It's not him that has--
It's not him that--
Hello?
Oh, it is him. Geez. Attendance is not feasible due to a health pandemic. At least one member of the city council is physically present at the meeting and all votes will be conducted by roll call vote so each member can be identified and recorded. Please note that even with councillor Bowler not being present, we are all here. Our first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda with any additions, deletions to the agenda. And to the best of my knowledge, I don't have any, but I have a follow-up question before we do it to the city administrator. I meant to talk to you about this earlier. We put on the, at the last meeting, in the minutes, it shows that we had a item that was tabled to the next meeting about the two trailers and I was wondering if we are going to be acting on that or discussing that again this evening.
Mayor, we'd prefer to hold off on that discussion, not have it today.
Okay, thank you. So then I would ask the council to move forward with the agenda with no additions or deletions. So move. We have a motion by councillor Briggs.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Kraus. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Aye.
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 Looks like he's frozen.
Technical difficulties.
Okay, and I will vote yes, motion carries four for the motion and zero against the motion. Please note that we had technical difficulties with councillor Bowler at this time. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from the Tuesday, September 8th, regular city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those. We have a motion by councillor Deitch. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Briggs. Discussion. Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And although yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we have the transfers of claims for the City of International Falls. Going to the general fund is going to be $9,951.67. That's going to be coming out of the water fund, $5,559.67, and out of the sewer fund, $4,392. We'll be transferring to fund 401, our permanent improvement, $66,666.66. That's coming from both the water and sewer fund in equal amounts of $33,333.33. Going to the capital, or the reserve for capital outlay is $25,760.42. That's coming out of the water fund, $19,136.17, and the sewer fund, $6,624.25. For a total transfers of $102,378.75. We have regular City of International Falls claims this month of $562,222.50. Airport commission claims of $19,371.87. And airport, I'm sorry, International Falls Public Library Board claims of $5,079.89. For a total of accounts payable, $586,674.26. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the resolution to pay funds.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Briggs. Any discussion, questions, concerns? I see we have councillor Bowler back with us. I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, open audience. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Please come up and state your name and speak into the microphone in the center of the room, right there. Yeah, if you'd like to come and speak, yep.
Daniel Grover. The reason I'm here today is I understand that our city received $460,000 for COVID-19 related issues. And one of the concerns I have is that I would like to see testing done for the residents of International Falls. Has that been brought up in a council meeting or discussed?
I believe, well, I know that I have spoken with the hospital about how we would go about doing that. The city administrator and I had discussed it as well. The, some of the, we have not had a discussion as a full city council about it just due to the conversation about it being a one-time test. I mean, we have to use the money within the next, is it two months, Ken?
November 15th.
November 15th, we have to utilize the money. So it would be a test in time. I mean, we would know how many people would be tested that day or how many people. It would be free, the way that you and I have had the discussion, it would be free to the residents. But again, we don't know what the turnout would be, how, putting it all together. And we have had discussion with the medical providers and Ken and I have internally talked about it, but we have not brought it past that at this time.
Okay, the last time I talked to you, Mr. Mayor, I informed you that in Chisholm, they had had 1,700 tests done. And even though only three of them tested positive, at least they knew where they stood. And I think, seeing the federal government is paying for this, if the hospital is going to use the excuse that they don't want a whole bunch of test kits out there that they're not going to use, I think that's a poor excuse. I think one of the top priorities should be, and I think the federal government had this as one of their top priorities, was to have the citizens of International Falls checked. I mean, especially where I'm concerned the most is senior citizens. I mean, I personally am fighting cancer, I have diabetes, but I also have Medica for my insurance. And they will not cover the test. And I think that the city council should take a serious look at having testing done and not put it off to where we're not going to have the money to pay for it.
And I think everything you're saying is a good point. And one of the concerns I have too is those that can't afford taking the test and going to the hospital or the clinic. So I completely understand that. Ken, do you have any thoughts on moving, if we do move forward on this?
Well, Mayor and council, Mr. Grover and I have spoke before and he's been very eloquent and impassioned with his request. And I've seen some information, we talked about a number of issues surrounding this. And in our conversation, I've seen some general correspondence where all testing through one form or another would be free so that nobody had to pay for it. But, you know, the devil with COVID, and there's lots of them, is that you cannot, I mean, you can test today and then you don't know what exposures you might have the next day, the next day, and the next day after that. So it's one of those things that, as you pointed out, it's kind of a time sensitive and it has value for that point in time. But any exposures that you might have to somebody else through community spread could result in a positive exposure and contracting COVID after that. So it's not to discount the comfort that people would get knowing that they've been tested and they've tested negative. But the other problem that we've seen is that obtaining the test results can take close to a week in our area. And there's little opportunity for trying to shorten that timeframe. So, you know, programmatically, we would have to partner with one of the medical organizations to try and do that and then work within the existing system for getting test results and stuff back to people. So, and we did talk about potentially having a program like that, but then having and only reimbursing persons that did not get reimbursement through their insurance programs. And the process to do that is just cumbersome, I guess is the bottom line.
And I think that that was kind of the conversation that we had had that made, that kind of made the most sense is try to come up with a program for those that don't have the medical or the financial ability to pay for the program to reimburse those funds.
So it's my understanding that the funds that we have, and it's my understanding also that every dollar that is spent has got to be accounted for. Am I wrong or?
Yes, you're absolutely--
I'm wrong on that or?
No, you're absolutely correct. Every dollar has to be accounted for.
So how quickly do you think something like this could be put in place?
I have no clue. Ken, do you have any? I--
Mayor, again, it's a function of the capabilities of the medical clinics that we have in our community and their ability to try and get staff, set up a system to try and do that testing, to prepare the test results, transport them to somewhere that can do the test results and get them back and communicate with people. So I know that a lot of communities have done this. You've seen free testing in a lot of the larger urban communities, but that system is not set up here. And some of those have a faster turnaround time than what we were experiencing in our area.
In the event that we were able to work with the medical providers in our community and set up a system that they could submit a bill to the city based off of that test, would that cover or count, would that validate through the rules and regulations that we have for the funding?
Well, that could, and that would be something that we'd want to explore with the people that have some financial background with insurance reimbursement through both of those agencies because, as you know, the reimbursement process takes time to process that and get stuff back. So if somebody knew, for instance, that a particular insurance provider did pay for that, you know, that they provided that information to us, if they knew that it didn't, then I think that's something that we could make the reimbursement for and get the subsequent documentation from them.
Even if we were to look at just Medica, Medicaid, Medica, you know, just knowing that they don't, because that's correct, right?
That is correct, yes.
So I mean, so that's something I think we could, we could look at this week and we would have to put it into place pretty quick. And I do have your numbers still from the--
Yes, and I appreciate your returning my calls. But you know, this is something that every city, and I, the way I understand it is that the amount of money that was given by the federal government through the state to the cities was based on the size of the city. So this is an issue that every city that has gotten this money has had to face. And once again, I don't mean to be repetitive, but I think that it should be a top priority for our citizens.
I think you've made that abundantly clear and I really appreciate what you've brought forward today. And that's something we'll look at and I definitely will call and follow up with you after, after we get through this week. And I do know how time sensitive it is as well.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have opening bids or quotes. We have the first reading of the contract ordinance for Pleasant Avenue Water Main Project. Chair would entertain a motion to have the first reading.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Deitch.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Briggs. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 He said aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero.
Yeah, I heard him.
Well, you may have to be a little bit louder, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Aye.
There you go.
Aye.
Yes, maybe even three times as loud, just scream it right next to that car. Okay, next, we have the first reading of the ordinance repealing section 30, enacting Code of Ordinances for regulating recreational and special vehicles. City administrator, you want to give us a background on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council. This particular ordinance is an initiative of the city councils to try and permit and allow communities or citizens in the community to operate golf carts on streets, local streets, as well as other special vehicles and recreational vehicles, class one and class two, ATVs. And so this particular ordinance is drafted and modifies our existing ordinance, which as you pointed out is section eight dash 30. The way this ordinance is drafted is we're repealing the existing ordinance in its entirety and replacing it with the text of this ordinance, much of which is the same, but there's also additions. And so it addresses, as I pointed out, class one and class two all trained vehicles. It allows motorized golf carts, either electric or gas operated, to operate on local streets. As part of that, it is necessary to have the slow-moving vehicle emblem on the back of the golf cart, which is a state requirement. I believe mirrors are actually required for a rearview mirror. And, and again, by state law, there is a permitting system. And so this would require people to get a permit once every three years in order to be allowed to operate on the local streets. But the council was very clear about its goal to try and allow as many of these kinds of recreational or special vehicles as possible within the city, within the parameters of the existing state law. And so we've drafted it in that fashion. And this would be a first reading. If there's anything that the council or the public feels should be changed or revised, we can do that now. And then there'd be a second reading scheduled either at the regular meeting of October 5th or you could have one as soon as the special meeting, which is proposed to be held next Monday to, for a couple of different reasons.
All right, so chair would entertain the first reading of the ordinance repealing and replacing section eight thirty of the Code of Ordinances.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ooh, I heard it. I heard him. We have a second by councillor Bowler. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Please.
Just terminology, what is a mini truck? I see that's listed in here. Now, what I see on a mini truck when I look it up, it's a small pickup. But it's listed as it can go on these trails and so on.
It, it's my understanding that it would have a wheelbase less than 65 inches. So it's not, you can't license it as an on-highway vehicle. So you can't license it as, like, go to the DMV and do it as a car. You have to license it as this special thing. They, there's a couple manufacturers out, they're very popular in Asia. And there's a couple Asian manufacturers that create these typically, they're like this wide. And they've got two, and then there's a little box in the back and they, the hood goes up and if you slam on the brakes real hard, you can roll it over. But the truth of the matter is, I have seen them. I know, I'm not going to name the individual, but it's out on Highway 1171, had a couple of them for sale in his field a couple of years ago. So I know there are a couple in the area. I haven't seen any in town, but that doesn't mean that they couldn't be here.
I know what vehicles you're talking about that were out on the highway there.
Yep, and that's, that's, those are mini trucks.
But the key to this ordinance does not put these on trails. It puts them on the roads.
Right.
So allow them to use the city streets.
They're just too small to be licensed as a regular motor vehicle that you would be able to use, like your car, for example.
Okay, so it's good, isn't it?
Any other discussion? I would just say I give a ton of credit for councillor Kraus. This was one of the priorities that he kind of brought to our council at the beginning of last year. It's been a long time coming, we've been working on it. There's been hurdles, there's been hiccups. But again, we've been able to finalize this and this was one of the goals that we had before January 1st. We really wanted to see it by July 1st, but we haven't, so.
And Mr. Mayor, can I add that I did, initially, when I read through it, I had thought, and I had had a conversation with administrator Anderson, that in some areas we were perhaps being more prohibitive than other communities or what the state outlines. But after rereading and kind of going through and then getting through my information that I have from the state, I mean, we're right, we're spot on. So this looks really good. So I have to commend administrator Anderson on getting this all put together and then legislation and land use for looking at things. And now we're finally bringing it to fruition, so I'm excited.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll have the first reading, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. We could hear him just fine in the budget and finance meeting. All right, next, we have the first reading of the ordinance, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, section 2.9, salaries of the mayor, councillor by adding per-meeting pay. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that ordinance. We have a motion by councillor Briggs. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Deitch. Discussion. I am going to talk on this because this is one of those things that I think we have to be transparent about, especially with an election. And I'm the only one that is running for a seat on this council. So I want to make sure that it's very clear on why we're doing this. A lot of people think that the mayor and city council make a lot of money and we have health and medical packages and we get paid very, very well for what we do here. We don't do this for the money, we do this because it is, it's important and it's hard work and we truly enjoy to be here. The monthly salary for the mayor of International Falls is $350. The monthly salary for the city councilors is 300. We do get a one-time payment at the, for contingencies of paying for gas, going around our community, whatever that is. We do get an annual contingency of $700. What we're asking to do is not raise our salaries by a lot. What we're asking to do is if we have a budget and finance meeting or a committee of the whole meeting, that we get paid $45 for that meeting. If we have a half-day meeting, it would be 75. And if it was a full-day meeting, it would be $150. It is a raise of the salary and I wanted to make sure that we were being forthright. Whoever sits on this city council, again, you're not doing it for the money, you're doing it for your community. But when you're taking time away from your family, you're taking time away from your work, you're, you're being pulled in different directions, there should be some form of a monetary stipend to that. Legitimately, I think this is going to change the outcome for our city council by roughly $90 a month. So you're essentially going from $450 to, I'm sorry, $350 to approximately 400 and depending on the meetings. City councilors, it may get them up to $390 a month. This is not a huge increase in salary. It is not a huge increase at all. It's just important to be able to have compensation for the time that you're away from your family, the compensation for the time that you're working on this, this position. And I just want to make that really clear. And I'm willing to put this forward before an election because it's that important to whoever sits in this seat January 1st. So I just wanted to make that clear of why we're doing this. So the chair, we have a motion and a second. Chair would call the question for the ordinance amending the pay for the per diem for the city council.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, approve the quote of $71,324 from UHL Company for installing card access electronic securities for the building from the CARES Act funding and authorized signatures.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Briggs. Any discussion?
Question.
Please.
Is this pass a fob or a card?
I believe it's a fob.
It's just an update on it, it can be either. But it is, it's two options to what it is. And talking through staff, they prefer to see a card. Reason being is it's easier to reprogram and you'd have a card instead of a fob system to go with it. So it can be either one, it's an additional fee, so.
All right.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, approve the quote of $21,915.81 from Hamilton Medical for the purchase of a Hamilton T1 ventilator package payable of CARES Act funding.
So moved.
Motion by councillor Briggs.
Second.
Second by councillor Deitch. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, approve the quote of $19,455 for the municipal building repair improvements from the insurance proceeds and authorized signatures. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that quote.
So moved.
Motion by councillor Briggs.
Councillor Bowler tried to move, so.
Okay, he's got it, the second.
Second.
Ken, can you give us a little background on this, on the insurance claim?
Certainly, Mayor. The city had a water leak over the weekend downstairs from the drinking fountain and it caused a fair amount of damage in the lower level of the municipal building. We had carpeting that was inundated with water and stained. This particular building was built in 1937, has plaster walls. When the water got infiltrated from the main floor level down to the basement, it got behind that plaster, the plaster's popping downstairs. And we also had some flooding down in the server equipment room, which is a little bit lower than the basement floor. So essentially, this is a proposal to fur out the existing plaster walls instead of trying to repair them, which is very expensive and they still end up popping periodically. So we're going to fur the walls, sheet rock them and paint them with the plaster on the inside of them and then replace the carpeting in that lower-level hallway. And so that's essentially the work that'd be done through Up North Builders.
So any questions on that?
Mayor, I should add, excuse me for omitting that, but we did submit a claim through the insurance company, it was viewed and approved. And so the insurance is paying all of it with the exception of our $500 deductible.
Okay, thank you. So the chair would entertain, oh, I already have a motion, a second. I will call the question at this time.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, approve the quote of $2,005.50 from Studio B Flooring for the municipal building carpet floor repair payable from the insurance proceeds. And then 1,000, yeah, $1,659.49 for the upstairs office payable from CARES Act funding and $1,598.58 from government buildings and authorized signatures. Can you please explain how this is CARES Act funding? Because I got asked this morning and I really couldn't explain it.
So we have three different funding sources, as you explained. And so the carpeting, Studio B Flooring will be putting in the carpeting that I talked about downstairs that was damaged as a result of the flooding. The proposal is, is we have a vacant office across the hall from the council chambers here. And with COVID, we had one of our employees working up in the conference room up here to maintain separation so that they didn't contract the disease because they had vulnerable people at their home environment. So we're going to be using the CARES funds that were allocated to the city to upgrade that office by putting in suspended ceiling lights, on which we don't have quotes for yet. But the carpeting, as part of the contractor being here, is going to repair, replace the carpeting in that office. carpeting in that office, and we want to make it available to have separation when we allow the public to be in the building again, because it's gonna be some time before COVID, COVID vaccine is out. So it's a, it's an eligible expense of CARES funds, and so they're only gonna be paying for the work that needs to be done in that office across the hall from here, so we can have separation with our staff. The other piece of this is that we'll be replacing the carpeting, just using the general government building budget, the carpeting out in front of the elevator here on this floor, as long as the contractor is mobilized in here.
That's great, that's actually what I thought it was, but I wasn't certain, so I didn't answer anything. I said I'd get the answers. All right, we have, do we have a motion to approve those quotes and higher Studio B Flooring?
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus.
And Councilor Buller tried to.
And we have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to new business. North Cooch Area Sanitary District has a request for sharing the legal costs for transfer of pipes and lift stations to the city of International Falls. City Administrator.
Well, Mayor, you can see that there's a letter requesting just that. They've indicated that the costs are about $12,000. I heard numbers at their meeting of maybe as high as 14,000, but the discussion is having the city participate in paying North Cooch's legal fees to prepare the paperwork and the documents, the bill of sale and the transfer agreement, to transfer some existing lift stations and sanitary sewer pipes from the district to the city, and it would essentially be for two lines that are in the old South Falls that has a separate city, required North Cooch to have ownership. With the consolidation and combination of the cities way back in 1989, that documentation and transfer of ownership to the city, because it's only a collector line, not an interceptor line, they're just asking that the city participate in the costs of their legal fees to do that documentation. Now, would also add, my recommendation would be is to not approve that request because the city of International Falls already pays about 88% of the costs to operate the North Cooch Sanitary District because of our flow rates are so much higher than East Cooch and the city of Rainier. So, if we were to pay half, we'd be paying, you know, half of it plus half of their half, I mean, 88% of their half, and it's, doesn't seem reasonable to me.
Sounds like the airport.
Pardon me?
Sounds like the airport.
Yeah. But they did make that request, and they, they thought it was appropriate for the city to split the cost with them, so that's why this is before you, and I've included the letter there, and I know that we have representatives on that board that could probably add more information than I can.
Okay. So the chair would entertain a motion to take part in the legal costs for the transfer of the pipes and lift stations at this time. Do we have a motion? For the second time, do we have a motion? For the third time, do we have a motion? It appears our city council does not want to pay half of the share of that cost. Please let the director know. I would also, I would also add to this, to exactly what you had just said too, but this came from the North Cooch Sanitary District, that they wanted us to upgrade the lines and the pipes and, and the lift stations. I mean, this was all initiated through North Cooch, this wasn't initiated through the city, and I think had we went to them and asked if we could change some of the lift stations or make these, I think it would make more sense for our legal side to pay for those, but given the set of circumstances in which we're working with, it, it, it doesn't make sense to me either. So, thank you, Ken, for giving us the information and the recommendation not to approve. That was kind of the way I was leaning to begin with. Next, revised bill of sale and transfer agreement between the city and North Cooch Sanitary City Administrator.
So, Mayor, related to our previous conversation, this is a request from North Cooch to have us adopt a bill of sale and transfer agreement, and they provided a signed copy of the bill of sale, the resolution that you see attached here, and a, and the transfer agreement. I had intended to converse more closely with our Public Works Director today, which I did not get an opportunity to, but I've made a minor addition to the transfer agreement, and you can see that on page two. I've underlined my proposed addition, and it reads, furthermore, the district further transfers any and all of its access and easement rights concerning said pipes to the city. So, what it's saying is that the lift station and the sewer lines that are included in the sheets that are attached to this are being conveyed to the city of International Falls, and it'll be our responsibility to operate it, maintain it, clean it, take care of it. It's being transferred to us, as is, for $1, and then we are assuming all the responsibility to maintain, replace, and repair those. So, I'm suggesting that we add what's underlined here in this sentence. I said, copies of said access and easement rights shall be provided to the city at the time this transfer agreement is executed. And then, furthermore, access to the pipes for operations, maintenance, and improvement purposes shall be granted by the district to the city from the South Falls Lift Station Number One. So, that's a lift station that they're proposing to retain ownership of. It's just on the west side of the sanitary sewer ponds, but then there's a large collector line that goes into that lift station, and in order for us to maintain our pipes that we're assuming, we need to be able to access the lift station, and then to get back into our pipes, to either televise it, clean it, or do whatever else might be necessary, if we have to line it at some point in the future. So I'm just adding that the city would be granted access to those pipes through this agreement.
Okay. So, chair would entertain a motion to approve the bill of sale and the transfer agreement between the city and North Cooch Sanitary District.
Move with additions.
We will, we have a motion to approve with the additions pointed out by the city administrator. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech, we have, or I'm sorry, by Councilor Kraus, we have a second by Councilor Deech to approve with the additions that were outlined by the city administrator. Any discussions? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we will approval, or we have the approval of support for a Coochin County application for a highway freight program grant. Chair would entertain a motion to offer that letter of support. So move. We have a motion by Councilor Briggs.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Councilor Buller.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? There was a lot of discussion about this in the coffee shop. Just letting you know, most people are not cool with roundabouts, and I, the more I talk to them, the more I explain to them that the vehicles would not have to stop. This is not a city project, we're just offering support to try to get those trucks across the road faster, and, but yeah, I think that there's a lot of concern about having a roundabout in northern Minnesota. With that being said, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Adopt the resolution authorizing to execute the Minnesota Department of Transportation Grant Agreement for the airport improvement excluding land acquisition. City Administrator.
Briefly, Mayor, this is, you know, we have a number of grant agreements that we execute with the Minnesota Office of Aeronautics, which is a part of MNDOT, and this is another grant, application for up to $1,800,000. It's effective through September 30th of 2024, and it's for improvements related to the runway expansion project, so.
All right, so, chair would entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Briggs, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next is very similar to the last one, same exact concept. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that resolution, adopt that resolution.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
Tie.
It was a tie. I'm gonna, just because he's closer, I'm gonna go with Councilor Briggs.
Oh, yeah.
We have an emotion and a second on the floor, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, consider the Fire Civil Service Commission recommendations of September 18th. Chief Anassa.
Thank you, Mayor, and I apologize for the short notice on this. I was on a phone call just prior to the council meeting. After conferring with the city administrator here, we did do our interviews, we did have four very good candidates, and we did identify a person for recommendation. However, we're requesting to defer this till possibly the next special council meeting on Monday, or the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
I appreciate that. We did have a budget and finance meeting earlier today, and it became kind of clear at the, the budget and finance meeting that we are, I think, the understanding I got from, we're still concerned on the funding source, we're still concerned on the numbers of making sure everything's right. I think we're all in agreement that there's a need for this, so I do appreciate a little bit more time for administration to take a look at that and for the budgeting, but I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have to move the table?
I don't believe so. I do want to point out one thing, just for those that are listening on the, online, and those that may be watching this on KCTV, and the, the fire marshal position that we're looking at, it's been kind of looked at as a blight officer position, and that's not what this is. What this is, is a fire marshal position is, is something that we're looking to put into place to make sure that our housing is up to snuff and, and our housing stock is good. We've had, we've had a lot of conversations in our community, I know that Councilor Briggs has pointed out that we've had, he's gotten some phone calls on this, and same thing with Councilor Kraus. This position is not about cleaning up light, it's about trying to make sure that we have good rental housing in our community. We know that that's an issue that we have, and, and it affects everything from, from people being able to move here, to economic development, and just having a safe place to live. This, this position would make, be, we would be charging landlords a fee to have their houses permitted and be looked at, and make sure that the furnaces are working, that the CO2 detectors are working, the fire detectors are working, that there's no electrical hazards, that the place is safe, it is not a dangerous place, and these, these are issues that we have in our community. We have a lot of renters that have, have issues with housing in our community, and we know that that's an issue. So, I want to change the narrative of what this fire marshal position is. It is not blight enforcement, it's about making sure that our housing stock is up to, up to code. I did say this at one of our committee meetings in the last week or so. It would be my goal to have this, this position lost to attrition in five, six years maybe, but we're so far behind in so many things in our community because we've let things go for so long. It is the duty of the, the fire chief to make sure that these inspections are being done, but he doesn't have the time. He oversees three departments, and it makes it very, very difficult to, to get out there. We have a building official, which again, has a job, and we're so far behind on this. So if we can focus energy, just like we have done with blight this year, and really put it together to be able to clean up the community, or what we're doing with the road projects, and we really give it our all to try to fix up these roads, we can actually move forward as a community. I don't want to hire a fire marshal any more than anybody else. I don't think that it should go on the taxer, the taxpayers, that's one of the conversations that we're making sure happens, is it goes to landlords, and ultimately, let's be honest, from the landlords, it's gonna be handed down to the renters. But if it costs me $10 more a month, and I know that my house is gonna be safe and clean and taken care of, I think that that's a good $10 invested a month. So, I want to change the narrative on the fire marshal. This is not blight control. This is about having safe housing and clean housing and rental units, and trying to fix up our housing stock in our community. So, I just want to start with that conversation and have that go through the community, because I've heard a lot of people don't think we need a blight enforcement person. That's a piece of the job, but that is not the job. So, I just want to have that conversation, and please, continue calling us. Call your city councilors, call me, let's have real frank conversations about this, because this is a step to moving our community towards having better housing stock. So, that's all I have to say about that. I just want to, please.
Another part of that, because you just, you just talk about housing, but there's more to it than that.
Right.
It's, it's, it's safety and well-being of everything in town, it's, it's your bars, your restaurants, all your businesses, they all have to be up to code, and, and that position would be going around to every business in town, ensuring that their systems are in place for fire suppression. When you get to restaurants, you know, they, when they're cooking, they have fire suppression systems, it's all fire safety, and there's a lot of other things that go along with all the court, code enforcement that goes with it. So it's, it's not just housing, it's everything in town, so.
Yeah, it's not blight, it's not housing, it, it's really trying to get our community to have that higher standard than where we're at.
And another thing along with that, I think you will find that a lot of the other cities our size around us have a fire marshal. You know, we're lacking, and we're behind the times when you compare us to other cities.
And, Mr. Mayor, may I add that it also gives renters a, another course of action to, and maybe a faster course of action than trying to go through the, because currently, they have to go through legal aid and other things. If they call the inspector and can get the inspector in there to look, they, I mean, they may be right, they may be wrong, but it speeds up the process. So it, it, it gives another, it's a little insurance policy for a renter, knowing that, hey, this place is inspected or can be inspected, and if I have a problem, I know now who to call, and they can help take care of it. So I think that's, I think that's important, and I would imagine that the chief would agree with that.
So, I, I think we are 100% supportive of the position, we just want to make sure that it's able to move forward without putting it on the tax, the taxpayers. I think that's the key to this whole thing.
Right.
All right, so we will next have delegate authority to the city administrator to pre-approve, quote, "to purchase a new indirect-direct dimmable lighting for the city council chambers" and authorize, for authorization on October 5th, 2020.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Briggs.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Oh, 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 oh.
Just, just a point of interest, this is gonna be paid for through the CARES Act, right?
Is he muted?
I don't know if he knows how to use the computer, he's kind of old.
Well, we can't hear you.
I see that the, our computer, the laptop, it's Xed out on the sound there, does that have anything to do with that?
You unmute him there?
On the bottom right?
On the bottom right.
No, bottom right, our, the sound on the computer is muted.
Oh, it should be, the, the computer has. We can't hear you, yell really loud, Walt, we really want to hear you.
Just want to point out, this will be paid for through the CARES Act, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Pointing out that it's being paid for by the CARES Act.
Yes, it's being paid before by CARES Act money.
Just want to let them know that.
Sounds good. Sounds good, sir.
Vote.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, set up a meeting with Rainier City Council. City Administrator.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Council. I got an email from the, my counterpart in the city of Rainier Thursday, and she is asking on behalf of the Rainier City Council that a meeting be set up with the International Falls Council to discuss water rates that are charged to Rainier's customers, and they just wanna know when we can do that. And I did send her an email back, and suggested that I would coordinate with the council and the mayor about, you know, maybe having a meeting when we meet as a Budget and Finance Committee to just have a frank conversation about what their concerns are with the water rates. And we did do this some time ago. I was trying to find minutes, I wasn't able to locate them, but about a year ago, or maybe longer, actually, we had a conversation with them in this regard too. And so I, I'm just looking for the council to set a date that I can, or a couple of dates that I can extend to, in invitation to the Rainier City Council, meet with us as a Budget and Finance Committee, is what I would suggest.
Does it have to be a Budget and Finance? Can it just be me and you, and go and talk to them? Or are we having a joint, joint meeting of the two councils?
That's what they asked for, and I was just suggesting that if they wanna have their whole council over here, we can post it that way, but I thought it would be appropriate for us to just, 'cause there might be a lot of research or more that we wanna do with our water rates before we make a decision about it. So I don't know that the council would be in a position to make any decisions at that meeting, and that's why I was suggesting a committee of the whole, or a Budget and Finance Committee, 'cause we are in the midst of trying to set our budget for 2021, as they are, so. But it doesn't necessarily have to be that.
It, it doesn't matter to me if we, if we feel pretty confident on, to, to be able to get it done, and get the preliminary levy done next Monday, I'm fine with that. I, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're not, we're not gonna rush through the, our stuff to do that. So I'm fine with it if the council is. So just set it with, with Monday's meeting with them, and see if that works.
So the special city council meeting, you wanna meet with them at that meeting in advance of actually taking action on our budget? Or do you wanna do it as a Budget and Finance Committee meeting at three, before our special meeting at, I believe, four?
Whoa.
Or whatever.
I, I yield to you, Ken. You tell me when we're supposed to be here, and we'll be here.
We set a special city council meeting, or will, for four o'clock on the 28th, Monday. So I'm just asking, do you wanna make it part of that special meeting? Or do you wanna have a Budget and Finance meeting in advance of that?
Let's do that, yes. Let's do a three o'clock with them, and we'll do it. Yeah, that makes sense.
So three o'clock with Rainier, and then right after our special.
Yeah. All right. Very good. All right, so any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, reports of boards, committees, department heads?
Mayor, I would just, I just wanna point out, everything that exists now, as the census is nearly over, September 30th is the deadline date, and it's really important for all government jurisdictions to have an accurate count, because we enjoy financial assistance that we get from the state and the federal government based on our population. So it's important to count everybody, and they're out trying to get door knock, and try and get people to respond, but they've, the Census Bureau has moved the deadline date from October 30th to September 30th. So if there's anybody out there that has not completed a census form, they can make phone calls, there's a number that's available, and we'll be sending information out with our utility bills that'll be going out tomorrow. Or they can do it online. It's really easy, it only takes five minutes, six minutes, and it's done. So I would just ask that anybody has not done that, to please try and do that before the end of the month, because it's important to us, and how much money we get as a local government.
I'd like to reword that. It's important to us, but it, it's, it should be important to, to the residents as well. I mean, that's, that's how we get their, our representation for our area, for the, the state, for the, for funding, it's how we end up getting delegations for the federal level. I mean, it, it's not about local areas just getting money, it's about representation, it's about your, your libraries, your, I mean, it, it's not a conspiracy. The, the whole thing is about being represented in, in, in our, our country, so.
Well, that's a very important one, and actually, what we've seen is the northern-tier states are losing population to the southern states in the United States. And the House of Representatives, the number of delegates you have at the House of Representatives is based on your population. And there was some concern in the state of Minnesota that we nearly lost a congressman because our population was not sufficient to maintain the aid that we have. So that is a very important, I mean, there's lots of things, and I'm being more parochial in, in my request to just get people to, I mean, an accurate count is important for just that fact, but it does have financial consequences to us as taxpayers, 'cause we get more aid from the state and federal government based on our population, and all the things that you mentioned, including representation, is very important in Congress, so.
All right, anything else?
No, not from me, sir.
All right. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. But the only thing I have to report on is the blight cases, and we provided this afternoon an updated report. There's one of the criminal cases we started that has been fully resolved. They cleaned up the situation, and then they paid the administrative fee of $150 that we have in our ordinance. And that's the plan, is when we get them in the criminal process, if they clean things up without our having to have a contested trial and take action, we're continuing their cases for one year, and they would be dismissed after one year, provided they've paid the administrative fee, and there have not been further blight violations on their property. So we've got one where that has totally happened. We have several others where they're working, and they're making progress. And I, I just spoke with Fire Chief Manasseh before today's meeting. I've got a couple of cases that are due to be heard in court tomorrow morning, and they've made some progress, and he's gonna inspect them before court to see if we feel there's compliance, or if there's still more that they have to do. As most of you know, we don't have Jared Baldwin on this full-time anymore, because he had his surgery last week, and, and is now off. But we have started a couple of new cases, and those actually apply to a business, and that's the first instance we've had where we have brought criminal proceedings against a business. We have another, number of other businesses where we have discussions ongoing, but progress is being made, so we haven't gone to the final step of bringing criminal prosecution. But we seem to be making progress, and, and hopefully that will continue. That's all I have, unless there's some questions.
I have no questions. Anybody else? All right, thank you. Department heads? Kelly, you have anything? No? Okay. We have, we received the police report in your packets. We also have the fire and rescue report. Then, let's see, blight report is also in your packet. I guess, Adam, I, I just have one question. Now that Jared is off with his surgery, how are we doing follow-ups with the open cases that we, we have going right now?
I'm following up on those.
Okay, thank you.
Say, Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to draw your attention, and the council's attention, actually, to something that's, we're very, very pleased about, which is the reduction in the ISO classification that we have. There's a public protection classification that the ISO applies to each community, and I think the fire department, as well as the Public Works Department, the water, water department in particular, should be credited for having a reduction in our ISO rating. So it was changed from a five to a four in simplistic purposes, and what that means is that when people have to pay property insurance, they have a, they can potentially receive a reduction in the insurance rates that they have to pay, because we have a better fire protection rating. And so the chief might wanna talk a little bit more about that, but it's pretty difficult to really see those kinds of increases, and, and for us to be able to go from a five to a four, I think is really a credit to our department, both departments really, the Public Works and the, and the, on the water side, as well as the fire department. We've got a lot of storage capacity with our two elevated 500,000 gallon storage tanks, which helps our maintenance program and hydrants, and, and what we're doing with our capital improvements throughout the community, I think is helpful. And then the new equipment that we've been able to get with the new aerial rig, and the training, and then the chief can talk a lot better about it than I can, but I just wanted the public to be aware of that, and I want the council to be aware of it as well, because it, it can result in some reduced insurance cost to anybody that owns property within the city limits, and five miles of this, of a fire station, so.
Yes, specifically, Mayor and Council, businesses are gonna really benefit from this, depending on your residential homeowner's insurance, is, you know, they can realize some benefits as well. It should be noted, these rates, or this classification goes into effect December 1st of 2020, so they're not in effect right now. We did get the notification that we are increasing to a class four from a class five, effective December 1st. Again, I don't wanna get too far in the weeds here, but to reiterate what the city administrator said, this is a pretty big deal. This is good for our community, and good for the residents and the business owners in our community. So hopefully, they can be realized by all parties of these improvements. In talking in our interview process for the fire marshal job, one of our neighboring cities to the south of us just increased to a class three, and they're hoping to hit a class two, which is phenomenal. I didn't think that was even possible in northern Minnesota. So we have goals. Our, our goal was to get to a class four, and I think we, we set our sights maybe on a class three now, for the next goal around. So there's a lot of improvements we can make. The fire marshal position will help with that. That is a large part of that classification. Dispatching circuits and communications, training, equipment, again, water supply, all things that can be, we're doing good on, and we can improve on, and hopefully up our classification.
Hey, can you come forward to speaking to the microphone? I just wanna ask one question, 'cause one of the things that we, we've been working on is trying to improve the infrastructure, and I know we've had, we've been running into issues with fire, fire hydrants, and when we have, sometimes they, we're not able to utilize them. If we start that process, is that part of the ISO too, of trying to get them bled, get them, you know, we're having issues with the infrastructure that we're trying to tackle?
Yes, absolutely. So a big part of the ISO is divided into two sections, in your city or urban area versus your rural area. In the urban area, it has to deal with hydrant test, or hydrant supply, water supply, so your flow data, your workability of the hydrants and the water system that's behind it. So that gets into exactly what Mayor, or Administrator Anderson talked about, our supply, and our, our, our ability to make water, and then our ability to distribute the water to the individual hydrants. How we prove that is through hydrant testing and flow data. So as we improve our infrastructure, that is measured by flow data, and somebody going out and measuring those hydrants. So one big improvement that we've made, when we put new hydrants in on the 53 project, I just went and looked at one last week, I was made aware of it by Public Works Director Broca, we actually switched hydrants, so we now have a, instead of a threaded coupler, we actually match what's on our trucks. So we have what we call Stortz fittings on our truck. We had to make adaptions to get to the hydrants, so we've actually made those, so there's no adapters required. It's been a big improvement for, or it will be a big improvement for us if we slowly work those into our equation. On the rural side of water delivery, it does fall back to some of the urban supply and water you can make, but it's also on how fast you can get it there. So things we can improve on there is how many GPMs, gallons per minute, we can provide on a fire scene, no matter how we do that. So if that means improving our infrastructure to get higher flow to the hydrants for the tankers, so that makes it quicker for them to fill up, that's a good thing. And then, of course, making that delivery time.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for the background on that.
Thank you.
Great work, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Any, anything else under department heads and such? Hearing none, we'll go to the report of the mayor, council committees, boards, and chairs. Anybody have anything to bring forward? I have three fast ones. First, I have been contacted by Rec Hockey regarding this year's season. They have supplied us with national standards on COVID, and being able to open, and guidelines moving forward. Myself, and I've, I've spoke with them, and I, I believe Public Works Director Broca has as well. We're looking at instituting those plans and moving forward, so there is a high probability that at our next council meeting, they will have a request with their, with their opening plan to open up Cary Park Arena for hockey this year. And I, I support that based off of the information that they have provided, and their research looking to meet federal and state guidelines to be able to do that. So I just wanted to give you guys that update. Also, I've, I've been speaking with some of our people over at the ambulance and EMTs. We've, we're looking at scheduling, we've been discussing that quite a bit lately. I think it would make sense for maybe just myself, or myself and Brian as HR, just to have a meeting with the paramedics and, and EMTs, just a discussion, just, just, just talking, seeing how they're at, moral, morale, and just having their voices heard. That's, that's what I've been hearing the most, is they don't feel like the city council knows what they're doing, and what their work schedule is. And this is no, no disrespect to any of the depart, I just think we need to have that conversation with our staff, so I'd like to set that up with, with Councilor Briggs, and just kinda meet with them, even if it's over lunch or something, just to have a discussion on how things are going over there, and what their thoughts are that we can improve. And the last thing is, we did have a Budget and Finance meeting this, this morning, we're still continuing to work on the budget. The goal that we're setting right now with COVID, and not knowing what our funding sources are gonna look like for LGA next year, we do have a belief we're gonna be getting all of our LGA funds, however, we don't know what that is. We also have some questions on how to utilize funding over at the airport, but we are looking at balancing our budget to the best of our ability without raising taxes this year. And so when, next week, we do come up with a, a levy, we're gonna come up with a levy at dollar to raise the taxes in the event that we cannot finance the airport. But I think we're doing a really good job. I think we're really, really close to being able to do it, and the goal for us is to not raise the taxes and the tax levy this year. And I, I think we're dangerously close to be able to do it, but not knowing how much money we're gonna have come in with LGA is a major concern that we're having right now. So just wanted to update the community on where we're at with our budgeting. Besides that, I have nothing further. Anybody in the audience would like to come forward and discuss anything with the city council? All right, hearing none, our next city council meeting will be, we have a special city council meeting next Monday to approve the preliminary budget and levy, and we will also have the second reading of Pleasant Avenue. We did have a discussion today, we're gonna have a Budget and Finance meeting at three o'clock that same day to discuss with Rainier in regards to their water. Our next regular city council meeting is October 5th at 5:30. This meeting is adjourned.